Well, good evening. It is now seven o'clock and I am calling this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. I'm Mary Ann Edwards. I'm very honored to be the mayor of Temecula this year. So could we please have Rabbi Yonasson Abrams here? We haven't seen Rabbi in quite a while. He's going to offer our invocation from the Chabad of Temecula, followed by the flag salute. How are you? So if you'd please stand.
Well, thank you so much. Is this on?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Just stay close.
Close, yes. Dear God, I stand here today with the City Council of Temecula to invite you to their city council meeting. This past year has been tough. It's brought out the best in us people and unfortunately at times the worst in us. The Jewish people have always waited for and worked towards the day when the world will be the place it was intended to be, and City Council has an important role to play in this As COVID is on the way out and we stand here determined to increase our engagement with each other, City Council is more important than ever. City Council represents the last and in many ways the most important of the seven commandments for all humankind. The seven commandments which are, number one, to believe in one God; number two, not to curse God or to take him seriously; number three, not to kill; number four, not to steal; number five, not to commit adultery; number six, to treat animals with respect; and finally, to establish governments and courts of justice to facilitate the first six commandments. God Almighty, please help City Council fulfill their purpose and bless our city with true health, peace, and prosperity. May God bless Temecula and God bless America.
Thank you, Rabbi. Great to see you. Would you please face the flag and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ron is absent. Councilmember Schwenk?
I'm here.
And Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Thank you. We have no presentations this evening, so we can move on to our board and commission reports. And this evening we have the Public Traffic Safety Commission and Mr. Bob Hagel.
Good evening, everyone. So we had our meeting on Thursday of last week, and I have three items from the meeting to report on and just one other topic. The first is traffic calming that is occurring on Del Rey and Villa Norte in the Meadowview area. And it was a fairly complex project that we started back in March of 2019, and some of it coincided with the overlay, the repaving of a lot of the road that was done there. After that was repaved, it was restripped based upon a plan that the residents preferred. We also had installed three all-way stop signs along the Villa Norte and Del Rey. And you haven't seen it yet, but there will be a request to change the speed limit to the 25 mile an hour prima facie on the Del Rio between Cala Pina Colada and Avenida del Reposo. Let's see, what else? We have installed two V-COM signs along the, one along Villa Norte and one along Del Rey. And then the last part of that was to place markings for equestrian crossings. So all those things were done, except for, well, that has not been done yet. That'll be done shortly, and that should help bring down speeds as well as make the crossing of horses a whole lot, lot easier to do, which we do quite a bit of horseback riding in this area. The next thing is in September, 24 roads, the speed limits will be surveyed. The other portions of Meadowview is in that. After that is done is when you will be brought to approve the 25 mile an hour speed limit I just talked about, as well as a number of other ones. One of the things about those 24 roads is every seven years, we survey every road in the city of Temecula. Sometimes we do them more often whenever there is a major change that has taken place, usually as a result of traffic calming efforts. One of the things we've noticed on this list of 24 is that a lot of these roads are being surveyed because of traffic calming that we did. So we're kind of excited about that because we get to get a report card on how well we did, and we're looking forward to getting that input to see how well those efforts have changed things. The last item from the meeting was at the request of Councilmember Schwenk, which is Costco backups at the gas pumps. If any of you have ever gone there, you may have noticed. They are backing up not only out to the Promenade Mall South Road, but also causing backups out onto Inez. And so that's being taken look at. Patrick Thomas and Greg Butler met with the staff, the management at Costco, as well as management at Promenade Mall. And Costco has hired a traffic engineer to look at what changes they could make to bring the traffic off of those roads, as much of that traffic as they can, onto their property. The last thing I just wanted to mention was in the last week or so, I've had a lot of requests by our residents for coffee with a cop. And they are missing that, and for good reason. And so I've asked Lieutenant De Silva to look into it and see if it's all possible that we can bring that back perhaps before the end of this year, and if not, as soon as we can. A lot of people are really anxious to get to know the, those officers, those deputies that are policing their communities. And I've noticed, I've noticed patrol cars going through our community quite often, and would love to just sit and chat with them for a little bit and see, see what's going on in their lives. And that's it for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hagel. You might be interested to know that we are establishing morning with the mayor and coffee with a cop. So I will be spending time with whoever is assigned to that, and we are going to start that.
Good. Okay.
Thank you. And Mr. Telesio, anything from the planning commission?
[inaudible]
Okay. Thank you. All right, then we next have public safety report and Riverside County Sheriff's Department and Temecula Police Department. Captain Zachary Hall, how are you?
Very well, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening. Same routine as always. I'll cover the calls for service and then our current stats, and then you can see on the PowerPoint to do a comparison. For 2021, our year-to-date calls for service, 41,953 in the month of June, 7,041. The average response times you can see for June, again compared to June of 2019, priority one, six minutes, 6.14 minutes; priority two, 16; priority three, 31; and priority four, 46. Again, you can see the comparisons next to it. Moving on to our Part One crimes, again, these are year-to-date 2021 compared to 2019. And our total violent crimes is 160 to 163, going down the list. One for murder, nine rape, 25 robbery, 125 for assaults. In our total property crimes, 1,252 year-to-date, burglary, 193, motor vehicle thefts, 181. There in the brackets are the recovered stolen vehicles, 127, and 878 thefts with zero arson. Again, the comparisons to the right. Moving on to the Metro team for their stats for June, six felony arrests or warrants served, 33 misdemeanor arrests or warrants. They've arrested 29 people for driving under the influence, issued 62 parking citations, and conducted 100 business checks. Moving on to your traffic team, covers the entire city, comparisons June 2021 to June 2019. Total citations issued, 1,084. Hazard citations, 751; non-hazard, 115; parking citations, 218. For our traffic collisions, 141, 34 injury, 107 non-injury, and they arrested 35 people for driving under the influence. Again, as I always do, I'll make the offer to explain any of these or add or take anything away from the stat report.
I actually have a curve I want to throw you. We see on television now so many scenes of people going into stores, picking up $949 worth of merchandise and just walking out of the store in, directly in front of the security guard at a, at a store, and they're not even approached by the security guard. So could you explain why this is happening? And is there anything that we can do about it? I don't know that we've had any of those instances in Temecula, but if that begins to happen, what is it that, what we can do and still be within the state's very convoluted law that allows somebody to steal $949 of merchandise or money every single day and only receive a ticket?
Well, I can tell you that's not happening here. Many of our larger businesses have aggressive loss prevention agents that work there. While some do take enforcement action and detain shoplifters, others are just very good witnesses and provide the information to us, and we can follow up on it and make an arrest. We just don't see that type of crime occurring here. If it did, we would go out on a education campaign with the businesses to educate and train their loss prevention, help them build a robust system for that, and then we would run targeted enforcement operations to try to combat that.
That's excellent, because, you know, the broken window theory tells us if you don't repair a window in a building, that the other windows are going to be broken as well. And I think it's the same thing with this particular activity that's taking place in larger cities, LA and, you know, Detroit, Chicago. If we start allowing it in one place or ignoring it in one place, I think it will happen in others, and so I'm glad to hear you say that. But I think I always want to aggressively, and I think the council would agree, you know, work with our business owners, retailers, so that that doesn't happen, it doesn't start to happen. And I'm glad to hear it isn't. I didn't think it was, but I just wanted to clarify, you know, in case, and I'm going to say, don't come to Temecula and steal stuff. Just don't.
Well, and keep in mind, ma'am, the, the difference in some of these crimes and how they're prosecuted is how we prove intent, right? While they may be misdemeanor shoplifting crimes, if your intent is to go in and steal, it's burglary, and those are still felonies in California.
Excellent. I suggest that we go for the burglary part as much, as many times as possible. Stu, you had a question?
Yeah. So just clarification. So the Metro Division, that's the Old Town Police, correct?
Yes, sir.
This is just really for the crowd.
Yes.
And then the Traffic Division, is the Metro numbers in with the traffic? Is that, is that encompassing the whole city, including Metro?
Separate.
Separate. So we've got two different stats.
Yes, sir. Now, I will tell you that we have assigned traffic motor officers that were assigned to the traffic team to Metro to specifically do traffic enforcement here in this area. However, the stats are broken out separately. Those are not inclusive of all the other stats.
Okay.
Two separate teams, completely different stats.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Captain Hall.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we are on to public comments, and Madam City Clerk, how many public comments do we have?
Madam Mayor, we have in excess of the 30 minutes of public comments. We probably have about 20 or 25 that were emailed in, and then probably about the same amount for in-person.
Okay, so we're looking at maybe an hour and a half of public comments at three minutes each?
Yeah, maybe even a little more.
All right, then with the council's consensus, we may go ahead and allow the 30 minutes as required, and then go ahead and do the business of the city, the residents, and then come back and do the remainder of the public comments. Do I have consensus for that? Okay, so we're going to do that. So let me go ahead and read this. "A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes." Excuse me. "Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting by the city clerk. Email comments must be submitted to randyjoel@temeculac, which is temeculacca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Email comments shall be subject to the same rules as would otherwise govern in-person public comments." So could we have the first speaker, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The first speaker is Christine Masa, to be followed by Laurel Lamont.
Good evening, and thank you. Hello, City Council. I thoroughly enjoyed the presentation in the last council meeting about the important history of the Ready Commission, including the addition of the equity value for the city's Quality of Life Plan. I want to start by stating that the Ready Commission has my full support. So have I experienced racism? Probably not, but I believe it exists. For those of you who think Temecula doesn't have a racism problem, my question back to you would be, how do you know? Here's an analogy for you. Many in the crowd last week rubbed the faith community. They clearly, like me, believe in Jesus, even though we've never seen him, but we've heard stories via the Bible, and we believe he exists. While I've heard stories of racism from my BIPOC friends and from the experiences of my children, so I believe it exists here in our town. My children have witnessed racism at school when kids on their campuses perform the Nazi salute in praise of our former president. That's no overt act of hate. Recently, my daughter was witness to racist and homophobic comments on, from chaperal teammates on TikTok, to the point where one of her BIPOC teammates refused to compete because she didn't feel safe among her other team members. And we all remember the racist graffiti at TBHS. This is racism right in our community, folks, and it's from kids. But the Ready Commission isn't just about race, it's about equity, diversity, and inclusion. I've been sexually harassed in my career. I've performed better than and received less pay than my male colleagues. And right here in town, my daughter has been ridiculed for being the only female on an otherwise male rec sports team despite her being a talented athlete. These are all things the Ready Commission can address. Additionally, at least two of our city council members identify as having learning disorders, including Jessica Alexander, who admitted this to me in a meeting last Tuesday. Wouldn't she think inclusion would be top of mind? So here's another example where our city falls short on race, equity, and inclusion: hypocrisy. In the last meeting, Councilmember Alexander said she believes there's only one race, the human race. Yet at a meeting with me and a black colleague last week, she said she identifies as Caucasian or white. For someone who doesn't see race, she clearly can see her own. She also spoke of her belief that homosexuality is a sin, although she does say that she hates the sin and not the sinner. Sin is a matter of faith and should not have any player bearing on the decisions made within the city council. She also doubled down on her own Rosa Parks-style commentary last week. My BIPOC friend shared the experience of the oppression his black father faced in the Navy when in wartime he was unable to participate in combat and was relegated to cook, one of the few acceptable assignments for blacks. Alexander then compared this experience to the oppression that she has experienced over the last year and a half over the pandemic. If any city representative believes that these are equivalent experiences, then the city is by far falling short on race. You may also be aware that our Ready Commission and our city are bolstered by their affiliation with the National League of Cities, an organization with a board full of leaders with public city service and affiliated with nearly 2,500 cities nationally.
10 seconds, Ms. Masa.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that I support the city's affiliation with the National League of Cities. And I want to thank you, Mayor Edwards, Councilmembers Schwenk and Stewart, for your service to the city. And Councilmember Alexander, thank you for your services to the religious organizations that you support, but I end by reminding you that City Council is not one of them. Thank you.
The next speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by Stephanie.
Ms. Lamont, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
So the first time I spoke here was April 2017, looking for attainable housing. So it's been a long time, but I haven't gone away, and I've been consistently here, looking for housing. So thank you for being counsel, because I don't take it lightly. I know you don't get paid a million dollars to be up there, and it's a lot, and I acknowledge No one on the council represents me. Nobody's a single mom. Nobody works within the local workforce. I'm on my own here, and nobody sits in the, in that seat. So I support the Ready Commission because beyond race, it is equity, inclusion, and diversity. And I'm not fully represented. The local workforce isn't fully represented, and we still haven't acquired attainable homeownership, which would fall into equity. There is no advancement of attainable housing security without the Ready Commission. That's just a fact. It's important, the representation. I have come here with a neighbor who really wanted to speak tonight, but was really too afraid to speak because she doesn't want to lose her apartment. She's a single mom, or not a single mom, but a mom of three babies in a one-bedroom apartment, and has been waiting and trying for three years to get into a two-bedroom apartment. But because that affordable housing complex makes more in rent by renting it out to a new tenant instead of asking a current tenant to move into, from a one-bedroom to a two-bedroom, they, she just keeps sweeping her under the rug. She happens to be a person of color, another myth and underrepresented human. So I'm here to show my support, show the need since 2017. Lastly, I read the survey of what's being asked by the residents, less traffic, they don't want high-density housing. I understand those things, but they also want Trader Joe's and a Whole Foods. That's more employees that can't afford to live here. So that's, that's it. You, James Stewart, you have employees, you know, and I don't know what your, you know, what that looks like for those employees, but I'd be real curious, you know, unless they have a second income, how they afford to live within the community they serve. It's not about affordable housing, because that's just a gimmick. It's not really affordable, and it doesn't provide attainable homeownership. There's no upward mobility, and rent goes up every year, whether our income goes up every year. And our building raised it 11%, even though it's legally only allowed to raise it 7%, but nothing has been done about that.
You have eight seconds, if you want to continue for, now it's four. Well, I'll give you an extra four if you want to go ahead.
No, I'm good.
If you, if you would email me, and I know you've emailed me before, we'll see, you know, we'll get information about your, your friend that accompanied you, and we'll see if we can help.
Oh, we would really like that. Thank you.
The next speaker is Stephanie, to be followed by Suzanne Lane. Stephanie? Stephanie? Okay. Suzanne Lane, to be followed by John Andrews.
Hi, Suzanne.
Hi. Good evening. I just want to start out by recognizing that we are literally in a spiritual battle. The Bible says that we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, powers, rulers of the darkness of this age, spiritual witness in high places. So it's really not personal to you guys. There is a battle going on that we can't see with these eyes, okay? So just want to say that. I was reading something today, Robert Malone, he's the creator of the mRNA technology. He's a vaccineologist for 30 years. And when he was asked if he trusts the vaccines, he says he doesn't trust them. He said, literally, "The lesson is, you have to assume nothing is safe until it's proven that it is," and assume all vaccines have side effects. And these COVID vaccines have been pitched at us not having side effects when in fact they do. We don't fully understand the whole spectrum of what the side effects are yet. We're being asked to take an experimental product that's not yet licensed. We're being enticed and compelled with public messaging to take it, and we don't really know if it's safe. So that's what he said. Here's what our governor said recently, that we're amid a pandemic of the unvaccinated. So he's pushing required vaccines for medical workers in California, state employees right now, but certainly we've all figured out that he's not going to stop there. So they're going to push for everyone to be vaccinated unless the people stand up and say no. That's the way it goes, you know? Evil just keeps going. It just keeps going unless good men stop it, okay? He's a tyrant. He's pushing the agenda of the devil himself. I mean, literally, that's what I believe. And so they're trying to push another wave, more fear, more lockdowns. We must not lock down ever again, okay? You have the authority. You guys have the authority to remove the emergency orders, and this has been successfully It's been successfully done in several Orange County cities already, so let's do it now. Our city will flourish if you just let the people live their lives. You must uphold your oath of office to protect our constitutional rights. No more lockdowns, no required vaccines, end the emergency orders, and we expect you to uphold your constitutional oath to protect our rights, so please, please do it. Thank you.[1585.65][1585.65][applause]
The next speaker is John Andrews, to be followed by Hong Tran.
If I could just ask?
John Andrews, to be followed by Hong Tran.
I could just ask, city attorney, I haven't heard anything about cities, you know, being able to be, you know, work outside of...
I don't have any information on that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Good evening, Council. The more I research the Ready Commission, the more I realize that it was created out of fear and duress. James Stewart said something he shouldn't have said, and it looks as though the city tried to go about damage control. The city of Temecula hired a PR firm, and from what I can see, they probably suggested the Ready Commission to offset Stu's comment and appease the leftist mobs. If that's not the story, please pull me aside after this meeting and let me know what the truth is. I have to admit, I think it's good Temecula decided to take action and protect the city, though I think you went about it the wrong way. You don't try to appease the mob by laying down and submitting to it. That is weak leadership, and usually the mob doesn't listen. There are countless examples of this in the news. Major woke corporations like Starbucks, Target, and Neiman Marcus giving millions to Black Lives Matter, only to have their stores looted and destroyed in the next round of riots. Strong leaders do not take a knee before the mob. Strong leaders use force and uphold the law.[1696.01][1696.01][applause] Strong leaders let law enforcement do their jobs.[1703.01][1703.01][applause] However, the city of Temecula hired, hired an expensive PR firm out of San Diego who in turn hired a commission of leftists to protect the city against other leftists. Let's take a step back and think about that for a second. Temecula hired leftists, the Ready Commission, to protect themselves against the leftist mob. That's really what happened here. And again, if that's not the story, please tell me what is. Sounds like a racket to me. So ladies and gentlemen, this is how we got here. This is how we got to the Ready Commission. The city of Temecula, in fear and duress, established the Ready Commission to appease the leftist mobs who threaten to burn down our town. Racism did not bring about the Ready Commission. White supremacy did not bring about the Ready Commission. Bowing down to the left is why the Commission was created. This is a joke with anyone with eyes to see and ears to hear. We don't want your leftist programs, and we don't want your failed Democrat policies. Thank you.[1781.65][1781.65][applause]
The next speaker is Hong Tran. The next speaker is Hong Tran, followed by Alexandra Galliano.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to concern about this violation I received from the city of Temecula about the homeless living on my vacant land. I contact support from the city police over dozen times and have not received any support. I spent a lot of money into getting them safely removed. I would like to present this hearing for today, because I contact with the city, Temecula, so many times, about my vacant land, homeless people living on my land. And I request them to remove them out, so I can clean that up and, you know, do my job. But police and the city didn't do nothing about it, until I tried to remove all the homeless people out. And then my family came over after I removed. My family came over, cut all the trees, and removed all the mess. Almost the job has been done. And then, I just out of town probably a week. And when I came back, one policeman, his name is Tom Cole, something like that, he called me on the phone. He said, "Oh, right now, I can send the people came to your land and remove all the mess." I said, "Please, wait for me, come back, because I am out of town." And he said, "Oh, I have to do it immediately." I said, "No, cannot do that. Just come back." I don't receive any letter of violation, or I don't receive any, like, you know, the time for me to done the job. And then he sent somebody came, move all the thing, you know, the thing from the homeless people. And he charged me $11,300. I don't know what it is. He said, "Oh, because I am contact with the, you know, the man came over and that cost, so you have to pay that amount." I said, "Not, I am not, because that is not fair, because my family, everybody, you know, do the job almost done." So, that's why I'm here today. I'm very concerned. Please, help me with this matter. Thank you so much.[775.63][775.63](APPLAUSE)
The next speaker is Alexandra, to be followed by Alexandra Galliano, to be followed by Adam Barrett.
Mr. City Manager, could we have someone connect with Mrs. Tran, please? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. So, I have been a resident of Temecula for the past eight years. My children are being raised here. My husband is a part of the local workforce. This is the city we call home. A slogan I've heard a lot over the years is "Temecula has heart." It is a wonderful sentiment rooted in the idea that our citizens have a place to live with a sense of community and compassion for others. I would love to believe that sentiment holds true. A lot has changed in Temecula since I first moved here. Our population has grown, because so many people recognize the gem that our city is. We've had new housing developments up and down this town, new businesses have opened, and a more diverse community resides here. This is why I wholeheartedly support the Ready Commission, and believe it speaks to holding that sentiment true. It demonstrates a commitment of our local government being inclusive of our growing community, and creating changes when and where they are needed. While I love living here, as a person of color, I do not always feel safe for me and my family. Several years ago, I saw a pickup truck in our local Target with a bumper sticker of a Nazi hate group that had the SS Bolts. It was a reminder that no matter how nice the city is, there is still hate that lives among us. I myself do not feel safe to even put a Black Lives Matter bumper sticker on my car, because I fear retaliation or violence against me and my family. That has to change. The Ready Commission gives members of the community, like myself, a microphone to be heard in regards to the way people of color feel, and what changes can be made to make our home safer for all, no matter how much Councilmember Alexander disagrees. Another huge change in our community over the years is the affordability to live here. A substantial part of our community members are struggling to find a decent and reasonable place to live. Per the city's website list of affordable housing, the majority of affordable housing in Temecula resides in or near Old Town. Not to mention, there is a years-long waiting list in order to get in. Old Town is a lively and lucrative part of our city. However, it surely isn't fair to the working families, single parents, and children living in those places, having to be constantly disrupted by the nightlife, and in conditions most of you would not want your own children to live in. A commission like Ready can bring a seat to the table to address how our city deals and plans affordable housing, to ensure that the old slogan of "Temecula has heart" rings true, and establishes a more inclusive and caring community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.[957.25][957.25](APPLAUSE)
The next speaker is Adam Barrett, to be followed by Jessica Christopher.
Hello. Although I want to go on record firmly opposing the existence of the Ready Commission, I'm hoping that there are mostly, that there are many people, I should say, that are here to speak to that tonight already, as they did so very well last meeting. I'd like to instead mostly address something equally, if not important to me. And that is the way you, the council members and staff, communicated and responded during the last meeting. It was disturbing, and it was disappointing. It gave me a glimpse as to how you must view your role as elected officials, and how you view the people that you represent. Randy Joel, in addition to the recommendation for a five-minute pause as a punitive action against the people for insisting on clapping to show their support, politely clapping, you know, that was how the meeting started, all the way to the end, and your obvious disdain for the public which you serve is disappointing. Although I will give you the benefit of the doubt, as all of us were tired at the end of a long meeting, it must have been hard to read people's comments without rushing, I encourage you in the future, and remind you that people deserve respect and courteousness to have their comments read clearly and audibly when they took the time to submit them. Mary Ann, you are so sensitive to a public comment about voting you out of office, and you took great sensitive, you know, pullback to that. People are entitled to this feeling. That's the point of this structure, and it's actually our responsibility and yours to understand that. And we appreciate your service, but you should always, all of you, be, you know, prepared for the fact that that's the risk, when you don't do your job and you don't listen to the people. Stu, after the way you were treated last year, I would have expected a different response from you. They attacked you, threatened you with the race-baiting tactics, disregarded your years of loving service to our community, and they tried to destroy you. But the people of Temecula who know you, like me and my family and our friends, they disliked those manipulative tactics to undermine your character and contributions. They voted you back into office as a way of saying, "We support you," and not this type of community manipulation.[1103.58][1103.58](APPLAUSE) Please, see this Ready Commission for what it is. Don't cave to the idea that you and your colleagues here need this formal voice in your ear to be able to do your job in a way that serves all your constituents. If that's the case, then you should remove yourselves from office.[1122.33][1122.33](APPLAUSE) Matt's not here, but the expectation that we should always trust you, that's not how this works. You should expect to constantly be unchecked. It's not our job to trust you. It's our job to vote for you based on your character, ideas, and if you're up for reelection, you're voting history. And then, it's our job to hold you accountable to represent as well, to communicate with you and be watchdogs of your actions. It makes it hard to trust you...
Ten seconds.
...when council ministers like Zach Schwenk misrepresent data like he did on the last meeting. You spun, based on your own bias, that there were 60% of the public, based on a survey, that wanted this kind of action, and that's not true.
Your time is up.
1.6 said that we needed improvement, while 60% said it was important.
Thank you.
There is a difference between importance and a need for improvement. You can both...
Sir, your time is up.
Have both feelings.
Thank you.[1173.01][1173.01](APPLAUSE)
The next speaker is Jessica Christopher. And Jessica is to be followed by Ashley Martin.
Okay, let's see if we can get through this. Councilmembers and staff, I have, I had not watched the city council meetings in years prior to the first of this year. I must say that some comments in the past meetings have been seriously horrendous. I find it unfortunate that Temecula has changed so much. I find a few issues that are critical to comment on. One, I understand the video from the last meeting was heavily edited, and it is no longer the footage of the mayor telling the people that we should not clap and we should be quiet. Within the meeting, one of the reports stated, "The council has room for improvement in listening to the people." Let me suggest how that might happen. Please, post the entire video, not an edited one from the last meeting. Don't run out of the room, or try to extend the meeting so people will leave. Don't think that you can keep people from clapping. It's our right to be heard. I know some of these things might be tough to listen to, but you signed up for it. Two, I was considered an essential worker last year. I was given a letter and told, "Go." I, like most people, have been so busy, I didn't see you were creating the Ready Committee. I have watched the meetings. It's a hate committee. These people are loaded with hate. I really, I actually know one of them. I mean, she's, she is, you know? I mean, she's got a chip on her shoulder a mile long. I have watched these, now I've lost my track. You cannot, you cannot fight racism with hate. You cannot fight hate with hate. You have created this mess. I would like to see it dismantled or reduced to something other than some level that they're sitting on the dais. I would recommend that the council members, especially the Ready Committee, read "Unconditional" by Zach Zahan. It explains how you fight racism and everything else. My third concern is the council's lack of understanding of their job slash duty to the city. We should not, you should, we should not know your political preference. This is why you don't have to disclose it. Your job is to oversee the city meetings, hear the people, and put aside your political preferences to protect your, our constitutional rights and understand those. Please, read the Constitution, the Declaration of the Independence, and the Bill of Rights. And there's a book I mentioned before, "How to Read the Constitution." Your job is not to tell us what to like or dislike. You have made things worse and not better.
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds. I want lines on Avanita Barca. I'm hit almost every day. I'd like to see the stats from 2020.[1363.86][1363.86](APPLAUSE)
The next speaker is Ashley Martin, to be followed by Tim Thompson.
Good evening.
Hi.
You're fine.
I grew up in this valley. I was raised to respect each person as an individual. And I was taught the value of service. I was a dedicated teacher to a wide range of students, and I loved each and every one of them, regardless of their background. Now, as a parent, I'm committed to teaching our children to work hard, as well as love and serve others compassionately. With that said, I went home from the last meeting deeply unsettled, and, to be honest, concerned about some decisions and conversations regarding the Ready Commission. You guys seem shocked that a lot of the public opinions were strong, and they were negative toward this commission. It seemed like you even took it personally. You were defensive. You were hurt by assumptions being made about you, that you didn't have, you know, an evil bone in your body, that we needed to trust, trust you. You couldn't believe that there was laughter after you asked, you know, you asked for trust. And if, you know, you don't mind, I would, you know, allow me to explain that kind of chuckle that I heard as well, and even got me, you know, kind of upset, or I guess I should say, I was taken aback by the request. The laughter was in response to you not seeing the complete irony of your comments and request. The public's passionate outrage opposing this commission was in many ways similar. In defense, and it's personal, because of the assumptions that are being made on our community with this negative, false ideology, which does stem from large trending political movements. It lays ambiguous blame. It pushes equal outcome. This equity is unproductive in detrimental ways. It's indoctrination. It's forcing us to be and see others in groups, rather than embracing the freedom to stand on your own as an individual. And I believe it's encouraging conflict.[1528.01][1528.01](APPLAUSE) It lays ambiguous blame. It pushes equal outcome, or, excuse me. The terms used in the Ready presentation, like unconscious bias, prejudice, systemic racism, they're not quantifiable. They're not measurable, therefore, they can't be proven, thus, they can't effectively be addressed. So, we're left with no solutions. Just seems like false narratives stirring up guilt and resentment on both sides of the aisle...
Ten seconds.
...and ultimately divide. You brushed off the obvious correlation between the Ready Commission's own language with that of, you know, critical race, and at the core, they are the same, whether you use those letters or not. I obviously have more to say about this, and I'm sorry, I couldn't compose myself to do it, but...
You did fine.
...I will be sending you the rest. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Tim Thompson, and then, the last speaker for the first 30 minutes is Ed Morrell.
Yeah. Mr.?
Mr. Thompson, how are you?
Well, good evening, everybody. I, like the previous speaker, was raised here in the valley, the oldest of my parents' eight children, and we were grateful to grow up in this area. I, myself, have raised my two children here, and now I've got a grandchild on the way, and I hope to be able to raise my grandchildren in the same type of environment I was raised in, which is an environment that is not systemically racist. And there's, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about how this community is, and I'd like to just make sure that we all understand here. I know many of you have been here for a lot of years. This is known as the Bible Belt of Southern California, and there's a lot of people here in our community. I would say the vast majority of the people in our community identify as somebody with Judeo-Christian values. I even heard some people that are here today who are representing themselves as Christians, and they say they want the Ready Commission. So, let me just speak to those who are here today that do fly the banner of Christianity, and let me tell you, first thing is that God did create all people from one blood. If you are a Bible-believing Christian, you have to know this. We are told in Acts, Chapter 17, verse 26, that He, that is God, has made from one blood every nation of men to dwell on all the face of the earth, and has determined their pre-appointed times and the boundaries of their dwellings. As believers, we admire all the things that God has done. He set up boundaries. What are boundaries? They are borders. And so, we respect the borders. We know that God's the one that put them there, and we want that to be appreciated, because God's the one that wants them there. Any attempt to belittle us as believers, as somebody who has hate because we appreciate what God has done, the people that are saying those things to us just don't really fully understand the Christian faith. God did break down the walls of division. Verse 27 continues to say that "they," that is, "all people from one blood, they should seek the Lord." This is why He created mankind, is to be in a relationship with Him. It says that He's not far from each one of us. God wants to be in a relationship with each one of us. Now, in Galatians, Chapter 3, it says that "you are all sons of God through faith in Christ Jesus. For as many of you as were baptized into Christ have put on Christ, there is," listen to this, "neither Jew nor Gentile," that is, race. He says, "There is neither slave nor free." This is economic status. And then, "there is neither male nor female." Obviously, we understand that one as well. So, "For you are all one in Christ Jesus, and if you are Christ, then you are Abraham's seed and heirs of," according to that promise. What this is telling us is that we, as Christians, should not break people down into the categories of race, or their ability to make money, or their gender.[1780.46][1780.46](APPLAUSE)
Five seconds.
And I believe that that's what the Ready Commission is doing. It immediately starts with dividing people on race. I am firmly opposed to it.
Thank you.[1791.13][1791.13](APPLAUSE)
And the last speaker is Ed Morrell. So, Ed Morrell? So, Ed Morrell.
Mr. Morrell, good evening.
Hello, everybody. So I had this great speech planned today, and I listened to all my friends. I could have repeated everything that they said because that's firmly how I believe. But I'm not one to just sit here and believe what everybody tells me. I need to get the facts, and I think we all need to get the facts. So I'm going to use my two minutes in a little bit unusual way. I'm going to introduce Ivy. Come here. Come here. Come up here for me. Come here. I'm going to introduce Ivy, and I am going to just give her a hug.
If you, Mr. Morrell, you're welcome to speak, but I don't want you forcing anyone to come up.
Ivy's not going to talk. I met Ivy. Ivy is on the committee for Ready. So I didn't know anything about Ready.
Mr. Morrell, if you could address us, because the microphone's not picking you up for the audience on TV.
Okay, so what I, what I learned from Ivy is this. Her parents came to Temecula for a better life, like many of us. We wanted something better for our kids. They got her out of the gang environment. She went to a local school, and guess what? She went to Berkeley, the last school I would send my kids to. But she went. So as I'm sitting there talking to her, I'm going, "Well, what are you complaining about? You know, you were poor, big deal. You're black, big deal. You went to Berkeley. So what's your problem?" "Well, I got out. Some didn't." "Okay, that makes sense. So now you're going to help. I'm going to do my best that I can." Well, honestly, that's what we should all be doing. So I cannot sit here and criticize something that I don't know enough about. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to go to their meeting. And if they start talking about critical race theory and painting graffiti on the walls and rioting, well, I'm out. And I'm going to tell them why I'm out. But if we're going to get together and they're going to express things to me that I would not know any other way, and it's something that I can then propose to my friends, and hopefully, we can come together and work and maybe get a better understanding of each other, maybe we can make some progress. Maybe we can't, but if we don't try, we're never going to know. And so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Morrell.
Madam Mayor, that's the thirty minutes.
Okay, so now we are ready for city council reports, and do I have any council members who would like to speak? I'm looking. Anybody? No?
I'll go ahead.
Go ahead, Jess.
Excellent. All right, I have a few things that I just want to discuss. Number one, some of you, if not most of you, should know what occurred here on Friday. We had an incredible, it was a time of worship. Let's Worship, it's called. Let Us Worship by Sean Feuitt. And I just want to thank Ruak Live for bringing eight thousand people here to Temecula. So again, thanking Ruak Live and Temecula Valley Mall for letting them hold that there. That was really appreciative, and it was beautiful. If you get a chance, look at the pictures. They're gorgeous. The next thing is, I'll stay away from that. I wanted to talk to, specifically to Mayor Marion Edwards and city manager. Obviously, we have a lot of people on both sides here. And so, as of the last meeting, one of the things that I had brought up, and it seemed like Matt Ron, or Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor, were both in favor of changing the name of the Ready Commission and at least having the conversation. So that being said, obviously, everybody knows my stance on it, but I would like to at least bring that up on the next agenda item to be able to move forward to see how we can stand together as a city. The third thing I'd like to do, please, if Captain Hall, if you can please get me the stats on the hate crimes here in the last three years here in Temecula, that would be very appreciative. I know, obviously, the last year or so with COVID is kind of difficult, but if we can have that prepared for the next meeting, that would be really incredible. Thank you. And the last thing I just want to say is, just to some of the people who are for the Ready Commission, maybe they don't feel that they're getting represented. And a couple of things that I heard that I just want to put words out, that if you don't feel like you're getting represented up here, you're, this lady right here that's speaking was a single mom. This lady here was on WIC. I was on the workforce. I did everything possible to work my way up, and I'm still doing it. I still make, hold on. I still make, and I don't normally say this, I make minimum wage because I love what I do. I work here at a 501(c)(3) at a nonprofit. It's not about money. The Lord provides for me. So if somebody feels like they are not represented here, again, please talk to me because, like I said at the last city council meeting, I am here to find out where the ball is getting dropped, and I will ensure, ensure to make sure that I help the city. But that's what we are here for, and that's what our staff is here for, and that's what we've always done. So thank you.
Thank you, Jess. So I have a couple of, somebody, people asked several questions, and I have some answers for you. The city has hired no PR firm to deal with the Ready Commission, and the Ready Commission is, here's the totality of what they're going to be doing. They're going to make sure that everyone in Temecula feels comfortable participating and engaging with the city, coming to events, signing up for city programs, sports programs, and things that are in our recreation guide, things like that. And that's really, they're reading all of our policies to make sure we're not intentionally leaving anyone out, or nothing that we're doing is blocking anyone from attending our meetings. And the same with programs and projects. We want all residents to feel that they're welcome to live in the city, and I heard several people say that, and we agree. There is no critical race theory. I disagree with it, and I think every council member expressed that same sentiment last week. It's totally unfair, and I happen to think it's, it could be racist in reverse. So nobody is supporting critical race theory. The commission is assigned and does what the city council asks it to do, and no more. We help them establish the agenda. They look at projects that we are working on. They work at projects that are coming forward in the city. And really, all we're trying to do is establish that we are not preventing anyone from feeling like they are included in the city as a resident, and that's really it. And I would say, and Jess and I discussed, that the only thing that has to do with race with the Ready Commission is the name. Really, they're not considering race. They're considering whether or not people feel welcome, whether they're, regardless of what color they are, what their religion is, and things like that. So that's really, and I encourage, I encourage you to go to those meetings if you would like to, because you're going to see, so far, they've done things like recommended that one of our murals mimics or represents the same thing that Small World does at Disneyland. The characters, the children look the same, very much the same in the face. I mean, that was the extent of their suggestions. There are nobody, no markings on walls. Somebody said something about graffiti or something. There's no graffiti in Temecula. We have twenty-four-hour removal, and if it's on private property, then we notify the owner of the private property and ask them to remove the graffiti. So there's nothing like that. No particular race will be considered above any other or instead of any other. We just want to make sure that when people come to a meeting, that they receive information that they've come for, that they feel welcome, and they feel like they're able to come back. We want to engage them. We want them to make, feel comfortable enough that they might want to run for office, or run to be on another one of our commissions, apply for appointment. And really, that is it. So I continue to be sorry that there's a lot of misinformation. I'm telling you the truth. There is nothing else. I attend Ready Commission meetings. Jessica's attended meetings, and I think city council members on and off regularly attend those meetings, as we do other commission meetings. So I don't know how else I can convince you that nothing else is going on, other than to tell you, just go to the commission meetings, and you'll see. Critical race will not be discussed because we do not want it to be discussed. I don't know what else to say, but there's another thing that we have to talk about, and that is redistricting, which is mandatory. It happens every year, or when their new census numbers are released, and we know that the census was taken. So it's a state-level mandate done by California Redistricting Commission, and then one member of the California Redistricting Commission specifically represents Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. So all Riverside and San Bernardino County residents, including Temecula residents, are invited to attend virtual public meetings to give their input on communities of interest to the state. And redistricting is done for our state representatives. Right now, we have Marie Waldron, who represents us in the State Assembly, and we have Senator Melissa Melendez, who represents us in the State Senate. And basically, in California, they try to have equal populations or similar populations for each of the representatives. With the census and the growth that's taken place in Riverside and particularly San Bernardino Counties, they will be taking a hard look. So the thing that it might impact is who represents us in Sacramento. So they try not to divide cities if they can. They try to keep whole cities within one district, which is, you know, good, but even if there are two representatives, let's say Temecula is split down the middle in order to achieve equal census, then we would have two representatives in the Assembly, perhaps, or maybe two in, you know, two in the Senate. I don't think that's a bad thing. I think it just gives us more voices in Sacramento. So the redistricting will take place, and copies of the flyer describing that are also available at City Hall online, City Hall and online at WeDrawTheLinesCA, WeDrawTheLinesCA for California dot org. So if you want to get involved in the redistricting process and learn how it works, you can go online and discover. We don't know what to expect yet because we haven't seen the census numbers in that, in that framework. So we'll be anticipating, and we will deal with whatever the state mandates us to do. But we do have our representatives, and we talk with them regularly. So that's all I have to say on redistricting. Anybody else? No? Okay. Then let's go on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurers report as of May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Number five, adopt a resolution to establish the amount of voter-approved Measure C annual special tax levy for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two. Number six, adopt a resolution to approve the solid waste and recycling rates for commercial customers for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. Number seven, adopt a mitigated negative declaration, approve plans and specifications, and authorize solicitation of construction bids for flood control channel reconstruction and repair project PW eleven dash ten located at Friendship Park, formerly Paula Community Park. Number eight, approve Second Amendment to agreement with David Evans and Associates, Inc. for the Diaz Road Expansion Project. Number nine, award a construction contract to American Asphalt South, Inc. for the citywide Slurry Seal Program fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one, PW twenty-one dash zero one. Does anyone want to pull or have any questions? I'm going to ask the city manager, just for information's sake, to give us a brief description of the resolution for the rates. Let's see where it is. Adopters and established amount, let me go back, I'm still going back. Where we try, where we establish the community facilities districts.
Madam Mayor, I think that's further down the agenda.
That's a separate part of the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Okay, okay. Then when we get there, then I want to do, I'm going to have, you know, a question for that. So if nobody wants to pull anything or any other questions, then I will accept a motion in a second.
Move approval.
We can go ahead and vote on the screen.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, who was the first and who was the second?
I'm the first.
You're the first and the second?
Are we using our screens, Randy?
I'll just do a roll call vote real quick.
Okay.
Just hang on for a second. Okay, Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron is absent. Councilmember Stewart, I see that you have reflected aye. Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
All right. In that case, I am going to go ahead and reassess the Temecula City Council meeting and move to the Temecula Community Services District and President Zach Schwenk.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I will call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you please note that everyone is still here? Dr. Ron is still absent. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
I go into Spencer with the reading of those rules, and we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number ten is approve action minutes of July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Item number eleven is approve agreement with Douglas Heiner Umpiring Service for Slow Pitch Officiating Services.
Move approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second.
Director Alexander?
Aye, yes.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Ron is absent. Director Stewart, Director Schwenk, I see that you have reflected aye.
Great. Thank you very much. That passes four zero with Mayor Pro Tem Ron absent. All right, we have one item tonight, a public hearing to approve the Temecula Community Services District proposed rates and charges for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two. May we have a staff report, please?
Sure thing. Thank you. The Temecula Community Services District provides a variety of services to residents, including residential street lighting, perimeter landscaping, slope maintenance, recycling, refuse collection, and unpaved road maintenance within the city of Temecula. These services are collectively referred to as TCSD's service levels. Property owners only pay for the TCSD services used or made available to their property throughout, through separate charges on their property tax bills. Each of the service levels have separate rates and charges that are detailed in the engineer's annual levy report prepared by the city's consultant firm, Webb Municipal Finance, who are also available tonight for any technical questions. At tonight's public hearing, staff is requesting the board adopt the rates and charges established for each service level for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Rates for, rates for service level B, the residential street lighting, are proposed to remain unchanged from the current rate of twenty-five dollars, sixty-eight cents per single-family residence per year. There are a total of twenty-nine zones within service level C, which is the perimeter landscaping, slope maintenance. Two of those zones have annual inflators that were previously approved through property owner elections, and the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two rates reflect a one point eight seven percent consumer price index increase. Rates within the remaining twenty-seven zones will remain unchanged from the prior year. Rates for service level D, or residential recycling and refuse services, are calculated annually per the franchise agreement with CRNR. For fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the rate is proposed to increase eight dollars and fifty-four cents to a rate of three hundred and eleven dollars, seventy-three cents per household per year. The rate increase is a result of the consumer price index and land tipping fee increase per the franchise agreement. And service level R for unpaved street and road maintenance will not be levied for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. However, due to feedback received from residents, the desire for the city to continue providing road maintenance within this area remains, so levies will resume next fiscal year or fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. This concludes my report, and we are available for any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you very much, Director Hennessy. Do we have any questions for staff? Mayor Edwards?
Yes, this is the one I was looking for. So do I understand that these are not city-imposed taxes? These taxes are requested at the, well, these taxes come at the request of probably homeowners associations or developers who built homes, asking the city to take care of their slope maintenance or their landscape maintenance. So they have So they have asked us, and that's why we have these taxes?
Right. These are technically, they are referred to as rates and charges. They're assessments that are paid through the property tax bill. So they may look and feel like taxes, but they are not taxes. It's just the collection mechanism that we use, which are the property taxes. So technically, their assessments are rates and charges.
Okay. And these are not imposed by the city but are collected or mandated? Well, the city has to approve them in order for them to go forward because they've been voted on by people who live in those particular areas?
I...
Except for CRNR.
Right. I think we're possibly confusing community facility districts with this one, which will be on the next agenda.
I'm still waiting to get to that one. But okay, so...
But they're very similar.
Yeah. So thank you for your first explanation, and I'll be back.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for staff? Okay. So this is a public hearing, so I'll now open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
We have no public comments on this item.
Okay. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any other further discussion? If not, I'll certainly entertain a motion to approve item 12.
So move.
We have a motion in a second?
Second.
All right. Motion in a second.
Okay. Director Alexander?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Ron is absent. Director Stewart?
Aye.
And President Schwenk, I see the aye.
All right. Thank you very much. This, that item passes 4-0 with one abstention. All right, we will go ahead and move on to our directors' report. Assistant Director of Community Services, Erica Russo, do we have anything?
We do, Mr. President. Thank you very much. We'd just like to remind the community of a few of our ongoing events that we have, starting with our summer concert series. This is a free event every Thursday night from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the CRC Amphitheater. This Thursday's concert features Escape the Journey Tribute Band. We also have our Art Off the Walls coming up on the first Friday of each month. This month's features the artist Martin Nassim with his vibrant exhibit Dreams, created with marker and plexiglass in the gallery at the Merc. And then you can visit the lot on Main to visit the 20 exhibiting artists. That'll be Friday, August 6, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Also, we'd like to point out that we're having our first-ever USA Pump Track Championships, which is a cosponsored event at the Pump Track at Ronald Reagan Sports Park. This is open to all residents of the United States, and it's held exclusively on Velo Solutions pump tracks. Local heroes and first-time racers have the chance to battle it out against themselves for the ultimate bragging rights and experience. Participants can bring their BMX or mountain bike and join us for an awesome day of competition and fun. More information is available at USAPumpTrackChampionships.com. That will be on Saturday, August 7, with an 8:00 a.m. start time. Finally, as we round out Parks and Recreation Month, we'd just like to give a shout-out to the City Manager's Office social media team, who is helpful in promoting our Park Adventure Series as well as our Park Packs. We had over 40 very happy participants who received Park Packs in exchange for their participation in our monthly event. That concludes my report.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for the report. General Manager's Report, anything this evening? Nothing further tonight, Mr. President. Thank you, sir. Directors, anything? All right. With that, we'll go and adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, Tuesday, August 10. We are adjourned.
Thank you. And I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we are moving on to the Temecula Public Finance Authority, which I like to refer to as the TPAFA. So let the record reflect that four members are here with Dr. Ron absent. And are there any public comments on the TPAFA?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So going on to this consent calendar, all matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Public Financing Authority request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number 13, authorize fiscal year 2021-22 special tax levies for the community facilities districts. And I will take, let's see. So could we have a staff report, please? Is there anything on this one?
Pressing the wrong button.
Jan?
I believe this is the one that maybe you were...
Yes, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Right. So we have several community facility districts, which are formed typically when a development is formed, and the developer is looking to raise funds to fund infrastructure. So they work with the city to issue bonds. Those bonds are paid for through these assessments over the term of the bond, typically 20, 30 years' time. So the monies that are collected are utilized to pay the debt service or principal and interest on the bonds each year. So they are, there is an election that's held within the district. It's approved typically before homes are built. But when the homes are sold, they're, it's included as part of their property tax bill to pay the debt service on these bonds.
Any questions? I have a question. So there's a disclosure at the time that the homes are purchased where the homeowners know what's included in that purchase price and what their responsibilities are going to be from that point forward?
That's correct.
Okay. So it doesn't come as a surprise to anyone. So that is item 13, and I will accept a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll move 13.
Second.
Motion and a second. So Randy, you want to call the roll, please?
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron is absent. Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
And Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. That passes, and there are, I'm assuming there are no other reports from anyone else on the TPAFA? Executive Director, Board of Directors' reports, anything, nothing? Then we will adjourn that meeting. And now we reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we have to go to a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the City Council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Number 14, adopt we-abatement lien resolution for fiscal years 2019, 20, 20, 21. Okay? And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight before you is the we-abatement liens for fiscal year 2019, 20, and 2021. Just for some background, each spring, the city begins abatement of hazardous vegetation. It's part of the municipal code, it's part of the fire code. The city enters into a contract with a third-party vendor to conduct this abatement. Before any abatement takes place, there is an abatement notification, so each parcel owner is notified via certified mail of the needs to abate. They're given opportunity to abate the conditions prior to the city taking action. And if no action is taken in the required time, the city acquires a warrant, enters the property, and abates the nuisance. Owners are billed for just the cost of that abatement plus an administrative fee of $140. And then the city places the lien on the properties for those property owners that are non-responsive. Prior to the lien actually being placed against the property, there's a public hearing, which we're doing here right now, and that gives property owners the opportunity to come and discuss with the council the proposed liens on their property. If the council approves the resolution, then the staff will take the resolution and, as well as the potential liens, and remit them to the Riverside County Treasurer-Tax Collector, where they will be placed on the tax roll. And this year, we have 45 properties that have proposed lien, which is down from 49 from last year. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of City Temecula Ordering Confirmation of the Special Assessments Against Parcels of Land Within the City of Temecula for Cost of Abatement and Removal of Hazardous Vegetation for Fiscal Years 2019 Through 2020 and 2020 Through 2021." That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Stu?
Okay. So as I'm looking through this list, there's a couple of big whoppers, and one of them, I think, is Miss Tranz over there. Can you explain how we can go through $20,000 worth of abatement? I mean, so explain the whole abatement process to me. And do they include homeless cleanups and stuff like that? Is that also part of that? So...
It could be, yes. And in the case that I believe that we heard earlier, which is the largest, I believe, bill for this year, or second, yeah, second-largest. It depends on the size of the property, of course. The larger the property, the more abatement that's done, even just for weeds. But if there are nuisance conditions that also include hazardous materials, or in this case, I believe it was transient activity and significant debris left behind, that was also a fire hazard. And it costs a lot of money to remove all of those things, and that's why you'll see some significant fluctuations in the fees. We have as low as, you know, $362 for a lien amount, all the way up to $20,000, and it really depends on the characteristics of the property and what's on the property at the time of abatement.
And then, so what about notification? How do we go about the notification process? And how many notices do we send out before we start doing it ourselves?
All the property owners are notified via certified mail. And then we allow them 21 days to get back to us and appeal what they've received. And so that's the notification process. So we have a verification that they received the notification via certified mail, and then the 21 days to appeal it. I can't say that, you know, most of these cases are opened in April. So the 21-days-pass notification, you know, is in sometime in May or June, and then here we are in late July. So there's significant time to contact the city, work with the city, and to make payment before a lien is actually on the docket here tonight. And then, of course, there's this process here tonight, a public hearing, which is kind of the last stop for property owners to come forth and say, you know, explain what they need to explain to the council in terms of what they're facing in terms of a lien. Now, the municipal code gives the City Council three options in this case. One is to move forward with the amount that's proposed for a lien here tonight, to eliminate the fee altogether, or to reduce it. So that's what the council has in terms of options in the municipal code. Staff's recommendation, obviously, is to move forward with the full amount for cost-recovery purposes for the city.
So when they're notified to do the abatement, what is the, you know, they have 21 days, is that correct? So is that to complete the abatement, or is that to notify the city they're in process to abate? Or are they given extensions? Can they say, hey, look, I can't get it done in 21 days. I can have it done by the end of this month or the next month?
Yeah. So 21 days is the time they have to appeal or contact the city and, you know, tell us what the circumstances are. If they do contact the city, it's general practice that we'll work with them as long as they need to get it done, up until a certain point when it needs to be done, when our contractor's available, under contract, as well as the, you know, the condition of the nuisance needs to be taken care of by a certain point. You know, in April, when we go out and look at the properties, the vegetation's usually green, it's rainy season, there's not usually a fire hazard at that moment. It's usually as we get towards June, the end of June, and now into July, when everything dies out, that we have to go ahead and abate because it's a fire hazard. So there is significant time. There is an established procedure, but the city has a long history of working with any property owner that makes contact with us and wants to arrange for something different that's outside of the strict rules of the 21 days.
Luke, I have a question also. So the resolution actually calls out removal of hazardous vegetation, but in the case where we're dealing with transient activity, do we also have to call in the hazardous materials team from the county in case there are needles or human waste or anything like that?
Could be, yes.
And if that happens, that costs more?
Right.
I mean, that's really an expensive service, correct?
Right.
Okay. I just wondered. Thank you. Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
I have a quick question. No, no, I'm actually going to kind of piggyback off what you were saying, and I had already written it, and then you kind of spoke about it.
It's that mental telepathy thing that we have going now.
It's the short hair. So quick question for you. So I know we've been working with the homeless a lot. My biggest question is, is if the homeless is moving into the area, and I know that there's weeds and stuff like that, and some of these areas only that, but when the homeless are moving in there, they're hiding in, they're dumping their trash. The people are, who own the property, they're kind of getting hosed on that end, aren't they? In a sense that they're having to pay for this?
It's an unfortunate circumstance, there's no doubt. But the responsibility does lie on the property owner to maintain their property in a circumstance that does not produce a nuisance to the community. And so, yes, it's very unfortunate. We all don't want to see it, but it unfortunately is happening, and it's their responsibility to remove that. And if they don't, then the city is required by law to go in and do it.
Okay. So how do we work it when the transients are keep coming back? I think that one lady was actually talking about it, and it's perfect timing. So if they keep, because, perfect example, we have a gentleman who was a car dealer here. I went to his property. I had seen that the transients kept going back, and he put in tens of thousands of dollars to clean it. So I wanted, I'm trying to figure out how, is there something that we can do as a city to kind of help the people out in that sense, the property owners? Because it seems like they keep having to get cleaned up and cleaned up and spend tens of thousands, and I feel like maybe, is this something that we can do as a city? Can we go to the county? Can we go to the state about it to be able to help them get funding somehow?
For weed abatement, I don't think so.
But for like the cleanup in itself? Because sometimes you said with homeless, like, there's a weed abatement, and they hide in there and stuff like that, right? I hate to put you on the spot.
If I can.
I'm just curious.
Well, just one second.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you so much, Luke.
I think there's two discussions here. The first is what the public hearing is about tonight, which is just strictly weed abatement and nuisance abatement. And then, you know, Kevin is probably going to weigh in on the efforts on the homeless front, the transient front, and the things the city is doing to address the things you're talking about.
Which is a lot. I will say, it is a lot we're doing that, so thank you. But it was something to look at.
Anyone else? All right, then I...
Did you have something to say, Kevin?
Oh, wait, Kevin. You have to wave.
I know. I think Luke teed it up. We're going to talk about two separate issues. One, obviously, is weed abatement, and then the efforts of the hot team, homeless outreach team, putting this on our radar. Once, and that team works with our code enforcement as well as property owners. If it's on our list, and typically it is, we dedicate some resources out there, too. So we have our officers, we obviously have the team that you're aware of, and we coordinate the efforts there.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So any other questions? I'm looking down that way, and I'm looking over that way. Okay, then I am going to open the public hearing. And Madam City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on the public hearing?
No, Madam Mayor, we don't have any additional identifiable speakers on this item, and Ms. Tran's comment will be recorded to this item.
Okay, thank you. So no one wants to speak on this issue, so I will close the public hearing, and if we do not need further discussion, I will accept a motion.
I'll move 14.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron is absent. Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
And Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
Okay. So we can now go back, rather than taking the developmental reports, we can now go back and finish with our public comments, which we held to the end of the meeting. You know what? Let's do this really quick. Let's go ahead and do 15, 16, 17, 18. It's just really quick monthly reports from departments.
Madam Mayor? Actually, those are just receiving file items. You're through the agenda. You can go back to public comment now.
All right. So let's go back to those public comments that we deferred to the end of the meeting. Does anybody need a quick break or anything?
Yes, please.
Okay. So let's take a five-minute break? Okay. Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll be right back. So ladies and gentlemen, if you start taking your seats, we can reconvene the city council meeting. All right, Madam City Clerk, we are ready to start the remaining public comments.
Okay, so the next speaker is Kenneth Dilberg, to be followed by George Rombach.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Don't be nervous, I saw you take a deep breath, so...
I'm not a public speaker.
You're doing fine.
I'm not fond of it either. But I, hopefully that'll help you realize how important I think all of this stuff is. I came here with a whole prepared speech about how I'm upset with the division and all of the innuendos about racism and inclusion and equality, equity, and all that stuff. But I think you kind of disarmed me because you said, oh, it's really a welcoming committee. So I'm all for changing the name from the Ready Committee to the TCWC, the Temecula City Welcoming Committee, and change the focus. I think that's all that needs to be said. Thank you.
Thank you. See, that wasn't so bad.
The next speaker is George Rombach, to be followed by Bob Cal.
Mr. Rombach, we haven't seen you in a long time. How are you?
It's been a while.
It has.
Unfortunately, I spent too much of the time in the hospital.
Oh, I hope you're doing all right.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, when we first talked about the Ready Commission, I was disturbed by the concept because this august body has led in being open to people, to bring them into the city. And I was very proud of that. In keeping with our old traditions, we maintained that. We didn't need a commission to tell us how to do it, but we could always do better. We're all human, we're never perfect. We could always refine it in the aspect of new opportunities. But I think I have seen more dissension since this committee was brought on, since before it was talked about. And I think that's the opposite of what this council intended, or what they should have intended. And I think the committee does answer to you. And I think that this council should provide more guidance in the committee. Like, for example, an organization that I'm a member of, I co-founded, the Constitutional Association. We offered that in terms of training, in terms of what that commission should be doing. Rejected. Old stuff that should be discarded, shouldn't have been here to begin with. Excuse me, that's not what I think the purpose of the commission was. Could we use advice in terms of being more welcoming? Sure, we all can. But I think we should be focusing in that direction. We should bring back into this committee the Christian principles and attitudes that we ought to be living in our daily lives. And I think it's the responsibility of this council to give that guidance to this committee. It is your responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rombach. I hope you're feeling better.
The next speaker is Bob Cal, to be followed by Christina Harrington. Bob? To be followed by Christina Harrington.
You've never missed a cue before, Bob. It concerns me.
Yeah, you know, I did some opposition research on, you know, understanding the Critical Race Theory, with which it's said that it doesn't exist, and the Ready Commission. And I, okay, the opposition research took me to a lot of places. And one of them is where this came from. And it's really the fruit of the poisonous tree. It's called the Race Forward, okay? The Critical Race Theory was created by them. And one of the things in the opposition research is a man named Ibram Kendi. He's been bred by the Temecula Unity Group. He's one of the founders of the Critical Race Theory, the CRT. Now, Race Forward was founded by George Soros through the Open Society Foundation, with lots of money, also Ford Foundation. So Race Forward is the big proponent that goes down through the Government Alliance for Race and Equity, the National League of Cities, down to the California League of Cities, called the CLC. And Randy Joel, no slight to you, but you're the co-chair of the CLC REAL Program, which is REAL Program is Race Equity and Leadership Program. And that's really where the basis of the race equity, diversity, and inclusion is, Ready Commission. So that's the, she's the co-chair of, really, the California League of Cities Ready Program. You know, how they founded this. The foundation is the fruit of the poisonous tree, is the CRT. Is the Race Forward, Race Forward again is where the Critical Race Theory was founded. That's, you can look on Temecula Unity and see Ibram Kendi's articles from Atlantic posted on there. You can go into all these different groups, like the Government Alliance for Race and Equity, and see how left-wing they are. The Foundation, Ford Foundation is left-wing now. It used to be Ford. You buy Ford products, they're American. Well, they're not American anymore. These are all open border, open society, they're one-world government type of things. I mean, everybody laughs at one-world government, that's where we're going. But anyway, I just wanted to leave you with all of that. And by the way, last time, Matt Ron said, there was no way to get rid of the Ready Commission unless we sue. Well, there's another way, too. There's three other ways, and one is a petition. I won't mention the other two right now. But the petition by the city could do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
The next speaker is Christina Harrington, to be followed by Jeff Pack.
Good evening.
Good evening. Our mayor and most of our council insists that Ready and CRT are completely unrelated to each other. And I'm not going there tonight. I already wrote a detailed letter to our mayor and council outlining the overlapping tenants of the two, and the fact that CRT, the CRT movement, is the movement that generated woke ideology, social justice, DEI programs, just to name a few. Tonight, I want to pose a few questions, and I look forward to your answers via email. Number one, what study was conducted? And what were the results that indicated that Temecula was supportive of the formation of the Ready Commission? Two, what verifiable data is there on marginalized, underserved, underrepresented individuals in Temecula? This should be public information. What are specifically the needs that are not being met? And can we get a public list of those? How many face-to-face conversations did you, the city council, have with local pastors, rabbis, priests, or other religious leaders regarding the problems you claim need addressing? How many nonprofits, charities, and non-governmental agencies did you consult before involving the government and taxpayer dollars? What are the mysterious barriers that no one has yet to define? How much taxpayer money do you intend to spend on Ready recommendations? What revenue-sharing arrangements, if any, will the city of Temecula receive through the formation of this committee? Please make this public. And finally, if Ready truly has nothing to do with the oppressor-oppressed power games promoted by the CRT movement, and has nothing to do with identity politics, and has no intent to funnel taxpayer resources toward giveaways to fill in allegedly racially caused outcome gaps, then why not scrap Ready and have a community outreach program utilizing the services already in place here in Temecula?
Are you, can you send us that?
The next speaker is...
Could you please send us, are you going to email us a copy of your, because I didn't write them down, if you could email them? Okay, thanks.
The next speaker is Jeff Pack, to be followed by Bob Quaid.
Kind of odd me on this side of this.
Hey, how are you?
First time in my professional life. First, I want to ask a question. Are we in Temecula?
Raise the microphone a little bit, Jeff.
I'm sorry. Are we in Temecula? This is the Temecula City Council, correct? Yes? Because I keep hearing from people that don't live here, that don't pay taxes, that don't have anything to do with Temecula, rather than try to assert their influence. I thought that was a little interesting. I was confused. I've been to a lot of city councils, and this looks like Temecula. First of all, I'm sorry I'm here. After 25 years as a journalist, I didn't ever want to have to do this. I've seen this go very badly for a lot of people, and I didn't want to be that guy, but here I go. I'm a middle-aged white man. I grew up in Fall brick and happily raised my kids in Temecula for more than 28 years. I love this country, I love our community, and I'm here to support the Ready Commission. In fact, let's see, I'm here to show them that not everyone in this community is so wildly unhinged, misguided, and obviously misinformed. In fact, many stand in support of this much-needed commission. But first, I want to talk about something that I want to get off my chest. I'd like to address you, Councilmember Alexander. Here's a couple of the things you said last week. You said, you believe in standing up for people who don't have a say, right? That's what the Ready Commission is formed to do, right? For people that don't have a say. You said, let's build together on our differences in our cultures. That's what the Ready Commission is attempting to do. You said, we have beautiful skin color, why are we dividing? You said, my God created us as a human race, one blood, one people, one race. And then you said, when we look at race, we divide people. You said these things with a straight face, right? Knowing full well, in the dirtiest, ugliest city council campaign in the history of this city, you distributed slanderous mailers about your opponent in the council race and darkened her photo to make it look like a mugshot. That happened. I wish I had it. You made a mockery of the city, let's see, I wish I had the hard copy, but like many others, we threw them in the trash and we were disgusted. They were circulated, excuse me, I didn't interrupt you. I wish I had, oh, let's see, you made a mockery of the city Temecula by comparing having to wear a mask to a meeting while you sit in a reclining comfy chair to the horror of racial discrimination that Rosa Parks was subjected to her entire life. You did that. You failed or chose not to attend the first Race and Equity Leadership Workshop, and yet you demand the Ready Commission accept trainings on race and equity from a far-right political group. That's some nerve. You constantly complain about how hard things are, how you don't have time. Why did you run for this seat? You want to shove the evangelical, political agenda down the throats of city residents, contrary to this country's Bill of Rights. Instead of serving the whole of Temecula's people, spoiler, the dais is not a platform for you to proselytize on. What you do is who you are. Look within your heart for the reality of that. I find it utterly disgusting to witness the sheer audacity...
Jeff, your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Quaid, to be followed by Greta... I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, starts with a P. So, Bob Quaid.
Right here. Honorable Mayor and city council members, first of all, I do, as the treasurer of Jessica Alexander's campaign, we did not spend any money on slanderous material, so that was a lie. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council for making Temecula one of the premier places to live in the county, and also one of the safest cities to live in in America. And I want to thank Sheriff Bianco and his sheriff deputies for giving us that proud designation. Thank you, guys. Next, I'd like to point out that at the last council meeting, I mentioned that the Ready Commission appears to be spending a lot of time talking about these underrepresented groups, these barriers, and yet they have not come forward to present any specific barriers or unrepresented groups, and that they were asked by the council to come forward with that information at the end of the last meeting. And we're anxiously waiting for that. In that regard, I would like to identify two underrepresented groups in the city that I feel have had barriers placed in front of them that need to be addressed. The first underrepresented group are the residents of this city who take the time to come to these meetings to speak on controversial agenda items, like the Ready Commission Agenda Item Number 20, last week that we all had to wait three and a half hours for in order to speak. Okay, these kinds of delays are the barriers to many young families and to the elderly who can't stay long into the evening in order for their voices to be heard. And I'm urging the mayor, who has the ability to move an agenda item up, if she can consult with the city clerk, find out how many people want to speak on an agenda item, and if there's sufficient numbers, that you move that agenda item up so that our voices can be heard at a reasonable hour. The second underrepresented group are unborn children that are aborted in the city by the one remaining abortion clinic. As I mentioned in my comments last week, every minority group is represented by laws protecting the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Every group but the unborn children. The barrier, this barrier to the, this barrier to the God-given right of life is stolen from over 2,000 babies a day in this country alone, mostly children of color. And until abortion is no longer the law of the land, I will be asking the city council to allow a group of Temecula residents to privately fund and erect a memorial at the Duck Pond to honor the lives of the lost, to the lost children's lives in this city due to abortion, just as they've honored the lives of the military and those lives that were lost to COVID-19 with all the flags. I will be calling on the council members to live up to the city's declared Temecula Cares theme for 2021 when my proposal makes its way to council in the next month or two.
Bob, your time's up.
Thank you.
And after Greta, it's Sonia Perez.
Hello, I have lived in Temecula for 26 years, and I have found it to be overflowing with brotherhood and camaraderie. And I agree the name of the Ready Commission needs to be changed. I love what you said, Mary Ann. If that's what it personifies, you have to change that and the mission statement. Because in the name Ready, it's an acronym for Race and Equity. And some people don't understand what equity means, but it is a tenant of Critical Race Theory, which involves social engineers. This is repackaged Marxism. It divides people on grounds of race rather than class. This creates racism. This is what we're trying to abolish. Equity gives everyone the same, equality gives everyone the same opportunities and is treated equally. Equity takes from those who work hard to create the most and gives to those who create far less, deeming them incapable. This cheats them, the pride of manifesting their dreams without being enabled. I, too, would like to know more details on the long-term commitments of equity for all residents, because that's on your website, the word equity. And I believe that needs to be changed, equality. Who are you going to take from to give the perceived underdog? How do you create equity for those who you're taking it from? The commission speaks of removing barriers. What are those barriers? How are they measured? And what is the means of removing them? If Ready does not have any racial agenda, it shouldn't be in their name, and they shouldn't have spent several minutes in the presentation on the last meeting with George Floyd on the screen. There is 100% consensus that what happened to him was truly an atrocity. However, with his violent criminal record, he is not a hero. He's not a role model. We need role models who are visionaries, like Martin Luther King Jr. and Jol hygiene Rumi. They embody virtues and ethical principles we can applaud and inspire all of us to go after our dreams. It is victimology which makes those comfortable with portraying minorities as incapable of elevating their lives without continuous help. It is only by abolishing race and equity that we abolish separatism. It is our dream for Temecula to manifest a brand-new, unifying plan that enriches those of all ages and cultures, providing fertile ground for artists, athletes, entrepreneurs, and all citizens.
10 seconds.
To continue to passionately pursue their dreams. Thank you. Thank you.
And after Sonia Perez is Brian.
Good evening.
Good evening. I first want to talk about last week that we had been closed for over 15 months and the first thing that you do is bring in an invocation with a baha'i talking about gender and sexual equality, which was a parallel for your Ready Commission. I thought that was really interesting, that that's what we did. And for you, Mary Ann Edwards, to say that the race... This Ready team has nothing to do with race? Well, that's not true. You're... Either you're being dishonest or you don't know. At the last meeting last Thursday, they put up George Floyd's mural. So if it's not about race, what's he doing there? It goes back to what the County of Riverside did when they called racism a health epidemic and they used George Floyd as the reason why something that happened in Minneapolis needed to be taken care of here in the County of Riverside and then it trickled down to all the cities. That's a decision that you made. Those were positions for the commissioners to be hired and to be paid with our tax dollars to have this Ready Commission. None of us, as you can see, want that. My next direct discussion is with you, Shrank. We were on social media last week and you are during this week and you decided to state that we... You started to do the fear mongering with how many numbers have risen? How many of those CV-19s are sitting in that ICU? And you were doing your fear mongering. And it was quite unprofessional of you when I asked you, "What was your motive? What is it that you're trying to put out there?" And you put your little meme on with Austin Powers as Dr. Evil. The only evil around here are those who are voting to keep us locked down again. Is that what you're trying to do? We did that for 15 months. And we came back and don't think I forgot about that. Don't think that as a small business owner, manager, city manager, Aaron Adams, that those 15 months that you all chose to continue to keep us closed didn't affect the small business owners. Many of us either lost a lot of revenue or B, had our small businesses closed, while every single one of you continued to get paid. We didn't get to get paid. Our salaries are not based on the tax dollars. They're based on what we do and that hard sweat that we do to build the Temecula City. I've been here for 18 years. I'm part of this community. I'm a taxpayer, property owner, and a small business owner.
Miss Perez, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann Edwards. Look into your Ready Commission, because it's not true what you're saying. It is about race.
The next speaker is Brian. Brian? Brian? Okay. The next speaker is George A. Mann. George? Okay. And then the last speaker is Louis Burleson. And then, Madam Mayor, we have several emailed comments as well.
Okay.
I have this whole thing written now. Yeah. I was a little sidetracked. I had gotten different ideas as I came up here. Like I say, I've lived in California all my life. I moved... I was born here in 1960 in Fontana. Born and raised in Southern California. And I watched this country, primarily this state, go from a place that I used to brag about being from to now being a place where I'm embarrassed to tell people I'm from. I've been to 21 countries in my life and I can tell you there's not a better place in this world to live than the United States. You can say what you want about racism, but I can tell you there's no such thing as systemic racism in these United States. We need a commission to oppose systemic racism like we need a taxi service on the moon. Systemic racism died. It started to die at the Emancipation Proclamation. The death nail of it was at the 13th and 14th Amendment, which made it legal and put engraved in our culture. We don't need a commission. The laws are there. Racism is not part of us. It is in some people's hearts, so is hatred. But we don't carry that hatred into our families. I was raised by a mother and a father. They taught me how to open a door for their mother, how to be a gentleman, how to pray to God. And they also taught me that racism... We did not speak racism. My mom and dad were from the South, the deep South. Racism is taught in our homes by broken families. And the biggest sense... The biggest type of racism we see now today is an inner-city, single mother trying to raise her child and cannot put their kids in a charter school because the school... The teachers' union won't have opposed school voucher programs. You... That young lady, she has to put her kids in an inner-city school? And I can tell you, I worked for LA Unified School District for a year. I wouldn't use the bathrooms in these places, let alone allow my kids go to these schools. It is absolutely racist for the teachers' union to sit back and not allow these parents, single parents especially, to have that $15,000 to put their children in other schools. I am completely off what I had written down. I had gone some other direction. I can tell you the other young lady that spoke about being afraid in their own community...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
I'm afraid too when I put an NRA sticker or a Donald Trump sticker...
If you get some rights, please.
...or a Blue Light sticker on my car, because God knows what's going to happen to my vehicle. And thank you sheriffs for keeping this community safe and thank you, city council member.
Thank you.
God bless America and God bless everybody here.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Mayor, I have several emailed comments that we'll go ahead and give the same three minutes to. The first one is from... It is from Dale Borgeson, Rick Vander Linden, George Tumayo, and Gary Audi. Regarding Consent Calendar Item Number Eight, Approve Second Amendment to Agreement with David Evans and Associates. Mayor Edwards, councilmembers, thank you for hearing our comments tonight. By Temecula Valley is a new bicycle coalition intent upon advocating for infrastructure and programs that will enhance cycling and pedestrian safety, accessibility to active transportation, improve traffic circulation, and encourage human movement. The Diaz Road expansion provides opportunities to make improvements on transportation, mobility, and connectivity that include car circulation flow and potential human-powered vehicle and pedestrian flow. The current paved and dirt trail along the creek side of Diaz Road is a segment of both the proposed Temecula Loop Trail and the Marietta Creek Regional Trail. Though Phase One of the expansion project does not include widening and reconfiguring of this Class One trail segment, the project does include Class Two bike lanes and some pedestrian improvements. Since the plans for Phase One are moving forward with some bicycle considerations and a Class One trail is already in place, we would like to focus our comments on Phase Two tonight. The Phase Two road expansion should consider improvements to infrastructure that is currently in place along that road segment. There is a concrete trail, gavel trail, and dirt path on the creek side of Diaz Road from Winchester to Cherry. We would hope that Phase Two will include improvements to the extension of the Marietta Creek Trail from Winchester Road to the Marietta-Temecula border at Cherry Street. Soon, we will join the city council and city staff to celebrate the Santa Gratuitas Trail undercrossing and the opening of the Old Town section of the Marietta Creek Regional Trail. These two trail projects exemplify the city's commitment to including trails and active transportation in the city's transportation and circulation plans. We urge the council and city staff to include improvement to the Marietta Creek Regional Trail in Phase Two of the Diaz Expansion. Considering building quality trails and infrastructure for bicycles, other human-powered vehicles and pedestrians will encourage more walking and bike trips, thus improving circulation flow in our city and the region. We look forward to being a part of the city's dedication to quality of life. Projects like the Temecula Loop Trail and Marietta Creek Regional Trail exemplify Temecula city staff and city council's commitment to advancing our community's quality of life. The next speaker is Vic McDowell. I'm a 62-year-old African-American middle-school football coach here in the city. I'm sorry? I'm a 62-year-old African-American middle-school football coach here in the city. In my three previous years of coaching the team, race relations wasn't much of a concern. With the team being probably 90% white, there wasn't any previous racial issues. Last summer, a Hispanic player asked an African-American player, "What is BLM?" A white player overhearing the question responded, "BLM is a bunch of bullshit and more black people kill each other more than the police do." About a week later, another white player told the same African-American player that black lives don't matter. First thing, all races victimize their own race more. Secondly, unsolicited cruel statements are unnecessary and nonproductive. 12-year-olds learn those hurtful comments from someone. Both incidents are reasons that people in this city need a diversity commission to create more understanding. The next speaker is Brian and Christine O'Neill. We believe that all men and women are created equal under God. We do not see the necessity of the Ready Commission. The next speaker is Melissa Burbainus. This is in response to recent comments made by Councilmember Alexander regarding where Temecula is falling short on race. Let's start with data. According to the city's 2020 PopFAX demographics, Temecula's population is predominantly white. There isn't anything fundamentally wrong with that, but it's racially homogeneous. Historically homogeneous, anything, town, city, schools, churches, fill in the blank, are breeding grounds for intolerance, racism, oppression, and all sorts of other social injustices that our country has stood up against for decades. Based on this knowledge alone, Temecula should aspire for better. Progress isn't made in echo chambers and diversity is critical to a thriving community. Let's also look at representation. There's no chance of political equality or all the great things local government can provide a community without representation. The city's council members may very well be qualified individuals, but they do not represent people of color in Temecula, nor do they represent the local economic workforce or the 60% of Temecula households priced out of home ownership. A lack of representation, which equates deficiencies in understanding and empathy, is at the heart of Temecula's affordable housing crisis. If council members were part of the local workforce dependent upon the mercy of property owners living in 500-square-foot apartments with four other family members or facing a three-plus-year waiting list for basic shelter, I guarantee they'd negotiate better terms for constituents before giving private investors $6 million to build so-called affordable housing. Temecula, for all of its charming attributes, falls short on race, equity, diversity, and inclusion. If council members believe otherwise, it's likely because they only hear from affluent constituents. The 60% who are priced out of home ownership are too stressed and busy and overwhelmed to submit public comments. They are trying to find operable washing machines. They are crunching numbers to figure out how they will observe yet another rent increase. They are disillusioned because politicians almost always are charismatic speakers but lack follow-through. FYI, charisma doesn't silence the reverberating windows that tenants choose when they are forced to accept the conditions of affordable housing, no matter how slumlordish they may be. The notion that Temecula doesn't need the Ready Commission is another example of where the city falls short. The Commission is currently the most diverse piece of Temecula's executive representation. I'd encourage council to embrace Ready members and work together towards a greater Temecula with empathetic and open minds. The next speaker is Janine Robinson. Unfortunately, I don't have the privilege to attend the city council meeting in person like many of us who work to create the Ready Commission and others in our community. I am commenting to thank my representatives, Ashwank, and each of you who respond to us with support, open minds, and open hearts rather than adversarially. I have a service background, but not from a position of power or authority such as policing or as a military sergeant, rather in medicine as a surgeon's clinical manager and assistant. In serving patients, one of my jobs was to listen to what side effects may have been experienced either with medicine or post-procedurally and convey it to the doctor for treatment, regardless of how unlikely I may have thought it sounded. So I thank you for listening to what our community has had to say about the side effects of being in the minority, whether it be skin color, ethnicity, neurodiversity, differently abled, medically fragile, or of different socioeconomic status or religion. Thank you for understanding that while the civic unrest of last year played a role in the movement to create the Ready Commission, real diversity goes far beyond race alone. And thank you for realizing that the reason for putting R for race first makes sense as an acronym, whereas something like dairy just doesn't. Thank you for listening and serving instead of trying to tell anyone that what they are living through isn't happening or hasn't happened. Thank you for respecting that your own understanding of God doesn't apply to everyone, such as our Jewish, Buddhist, or Hindu community members, and for not using your God against anyone. Thank you for understanding that not every bit of representation will always be necessary for everyone, but that everyone does deserve to be represented. The next speaker is Robert Lamb. You have continued to abuse authority that you should never have taken by enacting emergency orders. There was more than enough proof to prove that COVID mainly only harmed the same comorbidity sick people that the regular flu would have harmed. Emergency orders should have been dropped just a few months after starting them. You must vote to immediately stop the emergency orders because we have known for a long time there is no emergency. Quarantines are for sick people only and it is proven that locking down everyone is bad for everyone. The city does not want you to even think of doing it again. Only emotionally overdrawn, anxiety-ridden people who have no rationale or thought are the ones screaming for locking the world down. You are expected to put feelings aside and do what is right. I demand you end the executive orders now. The fact that you kept the lockdown going just so you could get millions from the state when the city never needed a dime is despicable and since you voted to do that, you are despicable. You are directly responsible for harming people in Temecula to get state money that we don't need here. For this reason alone, even though there are many, you need to be replaced for voting this way. What are you going to do with the money? I doubt you will be transparent and open the books and give us bank statements without a court fight. If you keep the executive orders in place, you can give city contracts to whoever you want. And yes, we think you are going to get kickbacks if you end the emergency orders. The contracts have to go out for bids. I think you're going to do the same underhanded political business like Obama after the 2018 bailouts and you're going to pay off large entities that will feed it back to you, but you won't give anything to the actual people and business owners that you have harmed. Will you promise to be 100% transparent and open the books and all bank statements upon request? Will we have to replace all of you but Jessica Alexander? Mary Ann Edwards is on record saying that the money was not guaranteed even if they continued the lockdowns previously like the state wanted. She and the rest minus Jessica Alexander voted to keep the city locked down while other cities opened up and still got money from the state. This just shows further abhorrent judgment on your part and that you need to be replaced. The next speaker is Rick Reese. I have raised past concerns to you regarding the Temecula Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Connecting a few dots will better illustrate some alarming aspects about the genesis of the Ready Commission that are important to know. As per the city clerk's July 13th briefing, the Ready Commission was modeled after after the National League of Cities Race Equity and Leadership REAL Program. Additionally, our city clerk has been personally recognized by the League of California Cities, a subsidiary of the National League of Cities, NLC, as a co-chair promoting the REAL Program. The NLC's REAL Program was developed in conjunction with the left-wing agitation group Race Forward, aka the Center for Social Inclusion, CSI, and the Government Alliance on Race Equity, GEAR, a subsidiary of CSI and Race Forward. This information is publicly available on the National League of Cities website as a new partnership between the National League of Cities and Center for Social Inclusion to advance racial equity. The nonprofit and nonpartisan watchdog organization Influence Watch describes the NLC as follows: "The National League of Cities is a left-leaning network of over nineteen thousand American communities that engages in federal policy advocacy and leads educational programming on behalf of city governments. Each year, NLC adopts a federal policy agenda at its national conference, covering a range of issues from recommending environmentalist policy to advocating for left-of-center gun control measures." Influence Watch describes the before-mentioned Government Alliance on Race and Equity as follows: "Government Alliance on Race and Equity is a fiscally-sponsored project of Race Forward that serves as a coalition of local governments engaging in vocal support for 'race-first' and identity policies. The project is also funded by the Othering and Belonging Institute, formerly the Haas Institute for a Fair and Inclusive Society, a left-of-center think-tank housed at the University of California at Berkeley that produces studies pushing 'race-first' policies. Race Forward, not satisfied in just formulating REAL and READY programs, also actively promotes Critical Race Theory, CRT, by providing political attack strategies against those offering sincere critiques." Their website reads as follows: Download this guide to craft your response to attacks on racial equity training, whether you are a parent, activist, or government worker. Contact Race Forward at media@raceforward.org if you want to work with Race Forward's team to develop and potentially pitch your story in support of education and training on systemic racism. Through these connections, it becomes readily apparent that this ready commission could easily morph into the proverbial Trojan horse. The base source of the ready commission, Race Forward, is a politically poisoned well, and as such, this current commission should be scrapped. Lastly, the city seems prepared to spend up to seventy-five hundred dollars for media training for the ready commission. This commission is supposedly to only serve as council advisors, not as public affairs officers. Hence, there seems no need for trained commissioners. The art of media spin and provocation. Temecula does not need commissioners circling around. Madam Mayor, that's three minutes. The next speaker is Jonathan Chang. I stand with and support the ready commission. Representation matters. Our town has made national news multiple times over the past two years for its racial insensitivities from members of this council. Councilman Stu has put forth the effort to learn from his mistakes and attend ready training. Sadly, Jessica refuses to work on her shortcomings, but one obstructionist should not stop the city from wanting to improve. The next speaker is Rachel Dennis. My name is Rachel Dennis, and I am a pastor in the city of Temecula. I have been working in ministry in our valley for over the past fifteen years. I want to applaud the city for establishing the ready commission, a long-needed commission to help our beautiful valley become more inclusive and diverse, more loving and humble. Thank you, ready commission, for being servant leaders in the fight for peace. I have been shocked through the years to hear the experiences of racism and homophobia in our valley, to read of the treatment of refugees coming for help, those needing health care, and the treatment of the homeless who are poor in health and wealth. School administrators, church leaders, city leaders, and business owners alike have all been guilty of this destruction towards the oppressed and minority community in our valley. After listening to comments from city members at the last meeting, I am embarrassed. After listening to comments from the church community that attended the last meeting to belittle or harass our city council, I am embarrassed to call myself a Christian. The God I serve stood with the oppressed, stood with those excluded and cast away by society and the religious. The God I serve loves, not harms. The God I serve fights for equality for all. The God I serve advanced inclusivity beyond the church, and I'm sad to say would still be fighting the religious in our city. The God I serve was a refugee, and I fear if he came to Temecula, he would be met with a sign to go back home. Thank you for your hard work in bettering this valley for all people. Don't let hate stop you. We need the ready commission to make our valley more beautiful. The next speaker is Gillian Larson. I have lived in Temecula for twenty years and have always thought we were such a unique community, which I even called a utopian bubble. I have been watching in sadness and with horror at what is happening in our town in so many areas and how the ready commission has become a powder keg with political opinions being the fuse. I can only think that people did not review the slides that were presented way back in August 2020 council meeting so Temecula could see in detail what this commission would be structured to accomplish. Commissions of this nature have been formed in many cities in this country, and our Temecula City Council had started considering a commission of this kind several years ago, thinking they would like a body that could be the voice of our residents. It is the R that everyone has become inflamed over when that is only one part, and race actually doesn't even mean just black or white. This commission is tasked with listening to our community to hear the needs of all of our citizens. Temecula has been doing a great job, including our aging population, special needs groups, those with various religious choices, families with all ages of children, different cultures and races, lifestyle choices, and so much more in what has been created and offered in Temecula. For one example, look how Temecula led the way in identifying the needs of our autistic and physically challenged community when it became clear their needs were different than ours in so many areas. One clear and visible proof of that work is now all of our children can laugh and play in our playgrounds, not just mine. There is always more that can be done to enhance the lives of all of our community to ensure all of our needs are included in what Temecula has to offer, and that is what the ready commission will be doing, listening and presenting our ideas to the council and the city for consideration. The next speaker is Karen Garner. I have lived in the valley with my husband and four kids for twenty-one years. We moved here to raise our family in a slower-paced community full of parks, good schools, and family activities. In that way, the area lived up to our expectations. I didn't expect to live in a community with so much anger, hate, and division. I have been embarrassed by our city many more times than I have been proud. When churches united to stop a mosque, I was mortified. When church-going people blocked buses full of children from our southern border, I cried for them. I was so ashamed. When I was angrily harassed by a local contractor while in my minivan full of little ones because I had an Obama sticker, I was scared for my safety. I had never seen such anger or heard such vile words in my life. Last week, while watching the city council meeting, I was again embarrassed by the ignorance, disrespect, and hate that I heard. I write this note to let you know that when the ready commission was created, I was proud of our city. My pessimism was proven wrong. You actually did it. You acknowledge that you don't know what you don't know, and you realize that you have an obligation to try to find out. We can't know what people need unless they have a voice. Thank you for creating the commission, listening to their recommendation, and please continue to support the ready commission. The next speaker is Craig Dunham. I wanted to express my support for the ready commission. I have lived in Temecula for twelve years with my family. I want to raise my children in a community that values and teaches equality, inclusion, and tolerance. I believe the ready commission will help our community in many ways. The next speaker is Lisa Skinner. I am urging you to remove the local health emergency orders. The cities of Yorba Linda, Laguna, Huntington, and Newport have done so. We never wanted to see Temecula locked down again. We saw how our neighbors and families and friends and small-business owners suffered. Many of those neighbors, families, friends, and small businesses are people with brown or black skin, and I know that causing those individuals any more harm with mandates or restrictions goes against all that the ready commission stands for. I know that council members choose to keep the city locked down and muzzled for the promise of a payday. In fact, two meetings ago, Erin Adams announced that the fourteen million dollars was really an insignificant amount of money compared to the city's overall budget. Hopefully, Mr. Adams doesn't deem the hardships the business owners and citizens of Temecula endured during the chosen lockdowns as insignificant in the grand scheme of things. It will be interesting to see how the fourteen million actually gets spent over the next five years and exactly who it will benefit. I am sure the three hundred and fifty businesses that have closed will also be very curious. As news of the new pandemic being caused by the unvaccinated takes over the mainstream media talk track, council needs to be reminded that all business owners and citizens' rights need to be protected and upheld, and this time, we expect council to vote no in the following and restrictive mandates that may come down from Washington, Sacramento, or the county. You know more mandates are coming. Choose the rights of the citizens over the money next time around. The next speaker is Emily Hyler. I am writing this letter today in support of the ready commission. As our nation has seen over the past few years, we have a lot of work to do in terms of racial equity, promoting and celebrating diversity and inclusion. It is important that this work come from the bottom up, the change happening within our communities with input from those directly affected. We cannot stand idly by while any of our neighbors face adversity for who they are. I think the commission can be a source of great support for our community in ensuring a welcoming and diverse city for years to come. The next speaker is C.B. Holmes. I want to share an open letter from Justice Now that supports the ready commission's demand for equity. Please realize that equality is not enough. Equity is the key. To our white allies, talk is not enough. Commit yourself towards taking action and making sacrifices to correct centuries of injustice. Open up spaces for Black and Latinx communities by refusing to send your kids to Ivy League and U.S. News and World Report Top Fifty schools, and encourage friends, neighbors, and family members to do the same. Imagine if those hundreds of thousands of spots at these institutions were occupied only by marginalized communities. Imagine the opportunities. We can achieve true equity within our lifetimes, but only if white folks are willing to sacrifice their privileges, end quote. And also, in regard to adding an equity core value to the QLMP, I add this from Professor Sam Williams of Penn State University: "To be less white is to be less oppressive, less arrogant, less certain, less defensive, less ignorant. Be more humble, listen, believe, break with party, and break with white solidarity." Who have you guys oppressed today? You're breathing. Have you left your house today? Okay, so you may have oppressed somebody, end quote. So to all of you irredeemable racist whites, I repeat the most crucial statement of the open letter: "We can achieve true equity within our lifetimes, but only if white folks are willing to sacrifice their privileges," end quote. It's the least you can do, but it will never be enough. And thank you, Randy, for using your platform as Temecula City Clerk to help make sure that equity and social justice get permanently installed in our city. Thanks in no small part to your efforts, there is an equitable lens being put on Temecula City Council and all commissions. And also thanks to you, Randy, the ready commission has the direction, influence from your vast experience and numerous connections to get the equitable job done even here in Temecula. If the white majority here is divested of its white traditions and racist small-town ideals, then equity for people of color will finally be advanced, and Temecula can be a global city for the future. Lastly, I want to acknowledge the Temecula City Council for approving Agenda Item Number Three, the list of demands that includes your check number 206121, dated July 1, 2021, to birth choice of Temecula, Inc. They can assist people of color with their, quote, "decision counseling," including referrals and abortion options. According to their website, quote, "A surgical procedure can terminate a pregnancy in the first, second, or third trimester, up to nine months in some cases, while the chemical procedure is an option within the first few weeks of pregnancy," end quote. I'm sure people of color will be happy that you are helping. The next speaker is Harmony Piper. I am writing in support of the Race Equity Commission being established in Temecula. As a local high school basketball coach and the mom of four children, two of whom are biological, white sons, and two are adopted Black daughters, I absolutely see the benefit of this committee for our community. This is a way to ensure that all of those in our wonderful community are given equal opportunities. We will all benefit from the diversity that this will ensure in our community, and I am excited to see how it will bring us all closer. My transracial family and the diverse athletes that I work with in our community, thank you. The next speaker is Andrea Dunham. I am writing in support and appreciation of the ready committee. I have lived in Temecula with my family for twelve years, and I love this city and its residents. We have a diverse group of friends and value teaching our children about equity and inclusion. Sadly, over the years, we have seen a number of friends have to deal with discrimination. In two instances, our friend's children were called the N-word by classmates. Another friend's child was told that it was wrong to have two mommies. I want all residents of Temecula to feel safe and included in our community. I truly believe the ready commission will help improve our town. The next speaker is Rosen Rager. I am writing in support of the amazing work you are doing for this city and to thank you for your clear thinking about the need for this city to be a welcoming place for everyone. Two weeks ago, you were subjected to a coordinated attack on your decision to create and support the ready commission. Many of the speakers expressed their love for this city and concern for its future. What happened two weeks ago? Our nation is going through a dark period, and it is in the political interest of certain powers to stock fear and anger, because when people are afraid, they become engaged and motivated. Critical race theory was identified as an issue that can be used to ignite fear, anger, and even hate amongst certain conservative voters. This anger needs a target, an outlet, and you, as well as the TVUSD, were identified as a local focal point for this anger. This is not about you. Do not take it personally. Please know that you have a lot of support. Many of us are not succumbing to the fear-mongering. We are ready to hear what the ready commission will find out. We are ready to make changes if it means that this city will be a welcome place for everyone. There is strength in diversity, and we want to be strong and united. The march towards a great future can only progress if we notice where we made mistakes in the past and if we can correct these mistakes. Please stand tall and proud of your achievements. Continue to lead this community towards a future where everyone feels welcome everywhere. There is no Marcus conspiracy to destroy America. The next speaker is Nancy Carlton. As a resident of Temecula for almost thirty years, I am writing to ask you to reconsider funding and implementing the ready commission as it is now proposed. It seems to me that this commission would have undue influence over the city council that other groups do not have. Our tax dollars should not be funding this commission and should not have direct access to the city council that other citizens and commissions do not have. When you start giving favor to one group, one people, or one commission, it will only serve to divide. In the almost thirty years in Temecula, I have never felt that Temecula is a racist community. CRT seems to be at the heart for the purpose of this commission. I think we can agree racism in all its forms is abhorrent. Our nation has come a long way since Jim Crow and "equal but separate" with the passage of the 1964 Civil Rights Act. This very act said we should not discriminate based on the color of one's skin. Now we are being told that based on the color of our skin, we are oppressed or an oppressor. Things like the ready commission will build walls of division rather than build bonds of unity. Our nation's constitution is a brilliant document, and because of it, we are an exceptional nation that people around the world still want to come to. Just like all people and all nations, we are not perfect. We have had issues to overcome and even fought a civil war over the slavery issue. Equal opportunity is what we should always strive for. Equity is a Marcus code word, equal outcomes, and does not have a place in a city commission. The ready commission is not the answer for Temecula. The next speaker is Bridget Green. Please stop trying to decide the human race. I'm totally against it. The next speaker is Cindy Kennedy. I would like to ask you to please decommission this divisive ready commission before any further damage is done. You couldn't have selected a more partisan group of members. Most of the ready commissioners have ties to this local social justice warrior group led by Julie Gary, several of which speak at their monthly meetings. I find it absolutely mind-boggling that you all let yourselves be pressured into creating this very controversial commission. No wonder Mike Nagar decided he had had enough. He knew where this was all going. My husband and I have lived in this city since 1989. The direction this city is going is very concerning. We did not have a racism issue in our city, but it looks like they are now trying to create one. I've also heard that several of the ready commissioners speak at their weekly meetings. This group likes to look for issues that create division within our community. One of their primary goals is to see Jessica Alexander recalled from the city council. Jessica is the one council member that actually represents and listens to her constituents, and is not letting this group control her. Just last week, one of their members wrote a letter to Temecula Police Captain Hall claiming a council member was threatened with violence at the last regular city council meeting. This is an outright lie. I was at this meeting, and not one threat was made. Here is an excerpt from that email. Email to Captain Hall: "I'm a Temecula resident, along with being a retired police detective. I retired after thirty-four years of service. I'd be the first to admit you have a tough job. That being said, I'd like your take on an issue. I recently became aware of the behavior of some individuals at a recent city council meeting. I understand that one of our council members was threatened with violence if verbal threats were made in a public venue paid for by the people of Temecula while individuals were taking part in conducting their civic duties. Some direct action should have been taken. Council members should be able to conduct their business freely and safely. All people, council members, and the general public exercising their rights should feel safe. Any person, and I mean any person, promoting those groups to gather at our city hall to perform such acts should be held criminally responsible. All persons making threats should be arrested on sight. These actions shouldn't be ignored. It will only allow it to build up momentum. Are you going to wait until a tragic incident occurs before you take action? Captain, I hope you strongly consider taking action against these offenses. After some of the incidents in this country over the past year, it's becoming more and more uncomfortable for people of color to conduct their day-to-day affairs without the fear of hate mobs protesting a diversity commission." That is the end of the letter to Captain Hall. This woman was not even at the meeting, and she now claims Captain Hall has agreed to meet with her in person. Why would he agree to do that? He already told her that it didn't happen. I guess since they now have control over the city council and the ready commission and the school board, they now are looking to expand their influence and control over the sheriff's department. Madam Mayor, that's three minutes. The next speaker is Amy Green. Stop the ready commission. Temecula doesn't need it. The next speaker is Julia Bell. My children and grandchildren, I am writing on behalf of myself, my children, and grandchildren. I do not believe that CRT should be instituted into our school curriculum- I do not believe that CRT should be instituted into our school curriculum. If this is put in place, we are teaching our children to be racist. There is nothing positive about any of this indoctrination. It is removing all that MLK and the Civil Rights Movement has accomplished. It is disgusting, and I do not want my taxpayers used to violate and indoctrinate our, our youth. It is a disgrace." The next speaker is Brian. And I know I called that card before, but I don't think he was here. Allow me to begin by stating a fact: There are no hate groups in Temecula. Are there people who disagree with one another? Well, yeah, but that is commonplace in today's overly sensitive and entitled society. If you think about it, not until the lying mainstream media and other forms of entertainment, along with our politicians, began telling us we should all feel the victim and blame our, our fellow man for so many false injustices, was there such a divide among our people? Not even under President Obama, the original Marxist who attempted to stoke division of this magnitude, was anyone not Black vilified to this extent as an enemy of his fellow man. I am a white, Christian man with a loving family and friends, with a successful business. Yet because of each one of those things, I'm being told I should feel bad about myself and guilty for being loved and appreciated and for accomplishing my dreams. That's not how the American dream is supposed to be, and I don't feel guilty for any of it. I didn't get this far because I am a white man. I am at a disadvantage, actually. If I were to go out and try and get a job in today's climate, I'm not a minority. I'm not going to be the top pick anymore unless someone still believes in the old ways of hiring based on work ethic and skill set, and out of the applicants, I happen to fit the bill better than the next man. In fact, if I attempt to win a government contract, I am never going to be picked over the woman-owned or minority-owned business. Heck, I won't get the same grants or special funding as these other groups of people would. My skin color is an automatic disadvantage or even disqualifier. My success should not be looked upon as white privilege. That's ridiculous. I am nearly 20 years into my company that I started with no financial help, and I got to where I am today with nothing but hard work and by treating everyone with respect, regardless of race, religion, or upbringing. After nearly 20 years, I still work 14- to 16-hour days, most days, and have yet to ever take off more than four days, and never more than two to three times per year, and always on long weekends. You want to talk about equity? How about being fair and impartial to me? You send a gay man, a woman, and a Black man, for example, along with a younger me into a corporate setting straight out of college these days, and you see who gets the job? I guarantee it isn't me. The guy who unbeknownst to the interviewer has the work ethic and drive to start my first company when I was 16 years old and will work 16- to 20-hour days like clockwork to get to where I want to be in life. Nope, don't hire me, the white devil. All my kind does is take, take, take according to these people on this panel here. And hiring based on race and affirmative action is an absolute joke. Why would anyone want to be hired for a job simply because they are of a particular background? Don't they know that there was most likely better candidates and that they are hired just to meet a quota?" Madam Mayor, that's the three minutes on that one. The next speaker is Scott Becker. The Ready Commission and its supporters will talk about CRT and social inclusion, race, and equity. This commission will be no more than a mouthpiece for the left and their divisive agenda to create the actual systemic racism they say they are attempting to eliminate, that they say exists in this country, but in fact, they are merely the inventors of it. This is indoctrination at its finest and is being promoted not in secret any longer, but blatantly right in front of us, front and center. There was no systemic racism until now. There is though systemic Marxism, communism, and systemic political and educational degeneration of our society that has been occurring for years. We have become complacent, and this is where complacency leads you to, a place where ethics, morals, values, and common sense have become irrelevant. Our children cannot be subjected to a theory. Let me remind you, a theory that has only one purpose, and that is to divide our children in the same way we as adults have been divided by this ideology. Although promoted as anti-racist, civil rights education, CRT actively encourages discrimination. At its core, CRT segregates people into two main categories: oppressors or victims. The calculation is based solely on skin color. The tenets of CRT stretch far beyond the humanities. We must, as a nation, as humans who wish to live peacefully with our neighbors of all races, stop this insidious movement now." And the last comment is from Christine Grenit. I wanted to write a quick note in support of this commission. It is absolutely necessary. It is mind-boggling that there are people who do not support its existence. I moved here in 2018 from the deep south and thought this area would be more open to diversity. I have been very disappointed to see just how intolerant local citizens are when it comes to acknowledging there's a problem that needs to be addressed. We need this commission." Madam Mayor, that is all of the public comments.
All right. Thank you, Randy. So we are now at the end of the meeting because we moved this, the final comments to the end. So City Manager, do you have anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just one item. Many that were here in the audience tonight received a flyer, copy that looks like this. You know, there's been a lot of talk about communication. There is over 25 different ways to stay connected with the city, city of Temecula, and so wanted to make sure people got that. We'll, we'll make sure it goes out on the website. But if you scan the QR code, it'll take you to the city's homepage, which you'll find all the links to the various ways you can stay connected on city business. So we hope folks will find that helpful going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Peter, anything?
No report tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right. Then I will take a motion in a second to adjourn.
Move adjournment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we stand adjourned.